Okay, good evening. We're back after a closed session and our clerk will read out the actions taken in closed session. Trustee Melchiker.
Yes, hello. On a six to zero vote with trustee Fuente's absent, the board approved a three-month general unpaid leave to a classified employee. Okay, action number two that we're reading out. With a six to zero vote with trustee Fuente's absent, the board approved a general unpaid leave for an additional six months with benefits to a classified employee. The next one, there's four actual items that I'm reading out. On a six to zero vote with trustee Fuente's absent, the board voted to reject the claim filed by Bailey Construction against the district. On a six to zero vote with trustee Fuente's absent, the board unanimously approved intervention in the state suit against the county of Orange regarding the vehicle license fee adjustment fee. That's all the items that we have to read out that took place in closed session.
Thank you very much. Please rise and join with us. The invocation will be led by trustee Prendergast.
On May 18th, a number of our students in the district will be going through commencement for certificates and degrees. And I'd like to take a moment, especially on behalf of trustee Larson, student trustee Larson, to take a moment of silence to reflect on the Japanese proverb that states that when you've completed 95% of your journey, you are halfway there. Please stay standing.
And our, sorry, our pledge will be led by trustee Jay. Place the flag.
Please address the flag and say the pledge of allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and next on our agenda is the presentation of some eight resolutions. This is a wonderful time of year. And just to give our clerk a little bit of rest, we're going to ask that she do the first four and then ask for help from a couple of other trustees. Our first resolution is for our student trustee, and I'm going to take the opportunity of presenting that at the podium with our student trustee. If you would come down there, trustee Melchiker will read the resolution.
Get to read it. I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead. Go ahead. Do you want me to wait till you get there?
No, go ahead.
Okay. This is, I'm reading this resolution about our student trustee Jordan Larson, and I have to say that trustee, student trustee Larson is one of the best student trustees I ever remember having with our board, and I've been a board member for a long time. Whereas Jordan Larson served as the elected student member of the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees for the 2011-2012 academic year, meeting regularly with the Board of Trustees, chancellor, college presidents, and Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College student governments to ensure that the voice of our 43,000 students will be considered as an integral part of the district governance. And whereas Jordan Larson actively participated in campus events, ran for the state student trustee representative, served as president of the chess club, played on the water polo and swim teams, was elected homecoming king, served on the inter-club council, volunteered at local elementary schools and community events, and taught swimming to children, all of this while preparing for university admission. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Jordan Larson for his outstanding service as student trustee for the 2011-2012 academic year.
And we will need to vote to make it official, so.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Meldow.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Patberg.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
He's going to vote for himself. And in addition to that, I think in the resolution it said he's also a lifeguard, but he is, he's a lifeguard. We have this wonderful plaque to hand to you as well, so you have to do the photo op thing.
Thank you.
And now you get to say some words.
Thank you, everyone, for giving me this award, especially to the board. I just want to say this has been one of the greatest years of my life. It's changed my whole perception of Saddleback, of the community colleges. I greatly appreciate the honor to receive this and to lead the students and be the voice for the students. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well done. The next resolution, and I really enjoy reading these resolutions, but I'm happy to have my fellow board members join me and have an opportunity to read some of them, is for the Classified School Employees Week. Whereas classified school employees provide valuable skills, services, and support to students, faculty, administrators, and staff of the South Orange County Community College District. And whereas classified school employees contribute significantly to the establishment and promotion of a positive and supportive instructional and learning environment to facilitate student success at Saddleback College, Irvine Valley College, and the Advanced Technology and Education Park. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby recognize, honor, and appreciate the many contributions of the classified employees to quality education in California and our district, and declare the week of May 21st to 25th as Classified School Employee Week. And our classified employees are truly wonderful at our district and certainly prop everyone up in the district, and they're the background so everyone can do their work, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam President and trustees, for taking the time to honor this invaluable contribution to the classified school employees by accepting that resolution on our behalf. This resolution began at our annual conference in 1984 where the membership pushed forward legislation that resulted in California Senate Bill 1552 decree to be an official recognition of Classified School Employees Week. Classified school employees are dedicated to our students every day and play a significant role from the day they step on the bus to the day they graduate, ensuring they are assisted by dedicated public servants that are proud to be part of the association in promoting a civilized society for our students. Thank you very much.
Okay, we just have to make it official and vote, so could you just wait one more minute?
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Meldow.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Patberg.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Student trustee Larson.
Okay. And now could our IVC president come forward and we'll ask you to help make the next presentation?
Yes, so while I mentioned that the classified employees are the ones that prop everyone up, now we're going to honor some of our Teachers of the Year awards. So the first one is the Teacher of the Year at Irvine Valley College, Marie de la Palme. And after reading this, I'd like to take your ballet class. Whereas Marie de la Palme, a full-time professor of the Irvine Valley College School of Fine Arts since August 2008, is recognized as the Professor of the Year for her ongoing teaching excellence in ballet, floor, bar, dance history, and as artistic director of IVC's Performing Dance Ensemble, which she founded. And whereas Professor de la Palme is loved by her students for her generosity, warmth, and personal and professional dedication, both to them and to dance. One student stated, "She has this unique ability to inspire from within, and her genuine passion for teaching motivates you to be great." Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Professor Marie de la Palme for outstanding dedication and well-deserved recognition by students and faculty as the Irvine Valley College 2012-2013 Professor of the Year.
And we need to have a roll call vote.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Meldow.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Patberg.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Student trustee Larson.
Okay, great.
I get to talk and share about what I love all day long, and I get to get paid for it, and I get to thank for it. It's wonderful. Thank you.
Wait, we need. Yeah. Great. Well, congratulations. Our next resolution is for the IVC Part-Time Professor of the Year, Joseph Gurgis. Are you here? Please come forward.
I mentioned a few years ago, we started doing resolutions for all our professors of the year, and it really is what we're all about, so it's very nice that we do it. I think it's wonderful. This is for Joseph Gurgis. Whereas Joseph Gurgis is a first-generation Egyptian-American and Los Angeles-based artist who investigates conflicts, discrimination, and class structure through paintings, drawing, and mixed media work using images that are both heroic and confrontational, and has been involved with film since 1997 and numerous shows and exhibitions in museums and galleries nationally and internationally. And whereas Joseph Gurgis has taught history and art for over nine years at various institutions around the Southland, including two years at Irvine Valley College, where he is, quote, "continually humbled and challenged by the amazing students," unquote, who have graced his figure drawing classes. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Joseph Gurgis for his outstanding dedication and well-deserved recognition by students and faculty as the Irvine Valley College Outstanding Part-Time Teacher of the Year.
And now we have to have a roll call vote.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Meldow.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Patberg.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Student trustee Larson.
Aye.
Just on a quick note, I teach at a bunch of schools, but I was telling President Rockmore this, that I'm continually humbled by IVC. You know, it's a community college, and it's probably one of the most enjoyable experiences I have. The students come in, and they're such an eclectic background, and they come in and they're excited. And just like Marie, I'm always humbled when I get to teach what I love to do and get paid for it, and it's a great experience. I just want to thank the board and thank the school for the opportunity, and thank you all so much. Thank you.
And I believe trustee Meldow is going to read the next resolution, excuse me, which is for Irvine Valley College Emeritus Professor of the Year, Becky Regali. Becky?
She could not be here tonight. I believe she's teaching.
Whoa, listen to that. Well, we'll still read it and vote, so.
Okay. Whereas Becky Regali has been teaching Pilates and fitness classes for mature adults through Irvine Valley College's Emeritus Institute since 2008 with wait lists for her classes. And whereas Becky Regali's students describe her as innovative, inspirational, focused, challenging, patient, positive, helpful, and reliable, possessing a great sense of humor, and serving as an excellent role model sensitive to all her students and getting to know them personally so that she can provide modified instruction that suits each student individually. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Becky Regali for her outstanding dedication and well-deserved recognition by students and faculty as the Irvine Valley College Outstanding Emeritus Teacher of the Year.
And we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Meldow.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Patberg.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Student trustee Larson.
Aye.
Great, okay, very good. We're now at Saddleback College Professor of the Year, Dr. David Delelo. And would you come forward, please? Dr. Dele, there he is. All right, and trustee Meldow is going to read this resolution.
Whereas Dr. David Delelo, a history instructor whose students describe him as one of the most exceptional, devoted, kind, and hard-working professors they've ever had the pleasure to learn from, was named Saddleback College's Professor of the Year. And whereas Dr. Delelo has served Saddleback College with great distinction since 1993 and is admired for ensuring his students have an educational, comfortable, and inclusive learning experience each day, challenging them to work assignments that broaden their minds and push them to thoroughly absorb the subject matter. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District does hereby commend and congratulate Dr. David Delelo for his outstanding dedication to his students and well-deserved recognition as Saddleback College's Professor of the Year.
Now we'll have our roll call vote.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Meldow.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Patberg.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Student trustee Larson.
Aye.
I want to accept this, thank you very much, and accept this award on behalf of faculty in its entirety. There's a lot of talented people here. It's hard not to be decent at Saddleback College. There's a high level of intellectual capital in the classroom and a lot of hard-working folks, and I think they've made me a better teacher over the years, so that's just hats off to them, too.
Very nice. Thank you. And our next two and final two resolutions will be read by trustee Dave Lang and Saddleback College Associate Professor of the Year. Being honored is Ken Lee.
Whereas Ken Lee, an instructor in Saddleback College's Horticulture and Landscape Design Department since 2000, was named Saddleback College's Associate Professor of the Year. And whereas Ken Lee, who serves as a passionate mentor to his students, showing great interest in their fieldwork and inviting them to his business to get a firsthand glimpse of a flourishing landscape design business, believes he can influence the next generation to become better through valuable commentary and constructive criticism, always welcoming questions and class discussions. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District does hereby commend and congratulate Ken Lee for his outstanding dedication to his students and well-deserved recognition as Saddleback College's Associate Professor of the Year.
And we'll now have our roll call vote.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Meldow.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Patberg.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Student trustee Larson.
Aye.
Congratulations.
I'm deeply humbled by this recognition, and I'd just like to express my sincere appreciation for Board of Trustees and Saddleback College under President Bennett and Dean Taylor and all the faculty members, and giving me this opportunity to serve the community and my students, and also allow me to pursue my passion, so thank you very much.
Okay, now our final resolution is Saddleback College Emeritus Professor of the Year, Rob Henry. Please come forward.
Whereas Rob Henry, a consumer health issues instructor who began teaching for the Emeritus Institute in 2005 after teaching in a division of Health Sciences and Human Services since 1987, was named Saddleback College's Emeritus Professor of the Year. And whereas more than 40 nominations were submitted for Rob Henry attesting to his popularity with his students, who attest that he is a perfect instructor for the senior population, an outstanding example of what an educator should be, and that he takes a genuine interest in the mental, social, and physical health of senior citizens. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Rob Henry for his outstanding dedication to his students and well-deserved recognition as Saddleback College's Emeritus Professor of the Year.
Have our roll call vote, please.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Meldow.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Patberg.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Student trustee Larson.
Aye.
Congratulations.
I'm truly overwhelmed. My students is where it begins and where it ends. The relationships that I have learned to have with my Emeritus students has spilled over into my relationship with students on this campus and all of my teaching. I just hope that I can teach as much as I learn from my Emeritus students. I'm honored. Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you. Okay, and that concludes our resolutions, but this is wonderful. This is what it's all about. We're now at the part in the agenda for public comments, and I have several requests to speak. And it looks like President Lynn Rockmore is going to be speaking. Go ahead.
President Patberg, trustees, chancellor Portner, tonight I take great pride in recognizing my esteemed colleague, Dr. Gwen Plano, IVC's Vice President of Student Services. Dr. Plano recently received the Association of California Community College Administrators' Leadership Award for Administrative Excellence. I had the honor of presenting this award in March in front of nearly 400 of her colleagues at the 37th Annual ACHA Conference in Long Beach. And I have to tell you, tell all of you, that it was my privilege to see Dr. Plano recognized by the state organization for her extensive leadership experience. This award acknowledged her successfully creating a cohesive learning environment for our diverse student populations, including programs for our returning veterans. As many of you know, Dr. Plano was instrumental in creating a veteran-friendly campus at IVC by developing forums in which student veterans could tell their stories to faculty, staff, and students, serving to help in their healing process and also at the same time increasing our understanding. Dr. Plano is known for her personable and collaborative style that is motivating and empowering for faculty and staff. Up and down California, she is known for her best practices. Her strong organizational and problem-solving abilities have mobilized campus communities at IVC and within the district, but it is the Veterans Program from which she derives the greatest satisfaction and has made the most difference to those students. I would like to invite Gwen to join me here, just to say a few words and allow us to congratulate her on this award.
Certainly. It's always humbling to stand or to be recognized in any way, especially when you know that the recognition is really for people across the United States, men and women who are serving in institutions just like this, because it's such a heartfelt offering that we try to make. I would like to just take a moment, though, because I think this will be my last board meeting, and I have just a few words, and they are genuinely just a few. First of all, I applaud you. I sincerely applaud you for the steps you have taken to revitalize our campus, both campuses. The difference is notable. You have set in motion the possibility of real change. The colleges need to be freed from the old ways of doing business. That old energy of personal agendas and political ambitions needs to be put to rest definitively. And you are doing that, and that is why I applaud you. It is the time, and only you have the power to make this change. As retirement draws closer by the day, I have reflected on the quiet majority, the 99% of our faculty and staff, whom I serve every day. If you listen carefully to their collective voice, I believe you will hear a different story than the latest rumor on the street or some impending disaster. You'll find instead the heartbeat of the district. It is this heartbeat, the heartbeat of the 99%, that needs to guide you, not lingering agendas or intrigues of a few. By focusing on this esteemed group, the 99%, I assure you that you will see the release of creative energy that will redefine the district. It is with gratitude, sincere gratitude, that I acknowledge that your task is a mighty one. But with profound respect, I want to say, your task is also a sacred responsibility. I will be saluting you from afar and supporting you wherever it is. I can't begin to tell you just how dear these colleges are to me. Thank you.
All right, and President Rockmore, I believe you have someone else you want to talk about? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I have a second. It is my pleasure tonight to acknowledge Chris Hogstedt, our RN and Director of IVC's Health and Wellness Center. She recently received an award at the Annual Conference of the Health Services Association, part of the California Community Colleges, a statewide organization for community college nurses. Chris was awarded the Exemplary Service Award, which has only been given to two other, given two other times. It reflects the person's outstanding service to the organization. Chris has served as Southern California Section President twice, State President once, Secretary, and has been responsible for updating bylaws regularly. In addition, she always is extremely involved in the annual conference as the emcee, chair for two years, and organizer of the recognition dinner for that organization. All of us at IVC know Chris for her commitment to the health and welfare of everyone, so please join me in welcoming and congratulating Chris Hogstedt on her award. on her award.
My organization is a wonderful one, and you'd be a fool not to be involved with it. It is dedicated to keeping all of your students healthy so that they can be successful in whatever they do. And I have loved every minute of all the work and time and the silly bylaws that you have to take care of all the time, just like you folks have to take care of all your policies and procedures. It's the lifeblood and what's really most important, and I think that's my legacy to the organization as much as anything else. And I'm happy to have had the opportunity to serve them and to serve the district because it's been just a wild and wonderful 26 years. I've loved every minute of it. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. All right, and President Rockmore, I think you have one more to talk about.
Thank you for your endurance. As I look out, I do not see my faculty. They said they may make it. They're ending a class and had to rush and perhaps have not made it. This is a recognition, however, for two students. Each spring, I have the opportunity to travel to Sacramento to a very special luncheon held by the Community College League of California that recognizes the academic achievements of Phi Theta Kappa students, the Honor Society Program across California. And this year, I was accompanied by the Phi Theta Kappa Advisors, Professor Kurt Meyer and Jody Titus, and again, both still teaching tonight. Otherwise, I'd have them here to join me in this. But at this time, and the students are also teaching, not teaching, but learning tonight, so we don't have them either, but let me talk about them just briefly. Two of our students, first Min Jong Ko, who was selected as the 2012 Coca-Cola Gold Scholar for her outstanding academic achievement. Selection as a Coca-Cola Gold Scholar is quite an accomplishment and is based on scores earned in the All USA Community College Academic Team Competition, for which more than 1,700 applications were received this year. This program is sponsored by Coca-Cola Scholars Foundation and is administered by Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society. Gold Scholars receive a $1,500 scholarship and a special medallion. All Coca-Cola Community College Academic Team Scholars are now listed in the April 23 issue of USA Today. The Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society administers the Coca-Cola Community College Academic Team Program and recognizes Coca-Cola Community College Scholars during an All Community College Academic Team Recognition Ceremony in 38 states. In addition to Min Jong, who was named by Phi Theta Kappa International Honor Society to the All California Academic First Team, and also Brianna Bergeron Matsumoto was named by Phi Theta Kappa International Honor Society to the All California Academic Second Team. They are recognized for their academic achievements, community service, and for the example that they set for fellow students. Phi Theta Kappa is the largest honor society in America in higher education, and I would like to congratulate both of them, although they can't be here tonight. I apologize for that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are now at reports, and we'll start with board reports. Trustee Jay?
Yes, I have just one item. I'd like to congratulate Gwen Plano on her retirement and the award that she's received, and she'll be missed. Thank you.
All right. Trustee Meldell, report.
I also would like to say congratulations and thank you to Dr. Plano. I've been here a little over a year, and I especially appreciate her smiling face every board meeting. So, thank you. I'm looking forward to a lot of things in the next month, including graduation. I'm going to be attending the fashion show. I'm going to be attending the Tenured Faculty Event at IVC, the nurses pinning, and so there's a lot of things going on this month, and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Milchiker?
I might as well echo the comments of my other board members, and I, Dr. Plano has done a wonderful job, and you'll be sorely missed. And congratulations to Chris Hogstedt, too. We were in the same book club, so we know each other. And Dr. Plano has mentioned to me how wonderful the veterans' services are, and I know that you were very instrumental in developing them, so thank you. I thought I'd mention a few things that I attended since the last board meeting. One was a Saddleback College fundraiser, which was held right here at Saddleback College, and it was really fun, and our, the students actually, the food service students actually did all the food and did all the serving. And I have to say that at the live auction, my husband surprised me by buying this diamond necklace. So it was a win-win situation, one for the students and two for me, so it was fun. And I attended one of the Saddleback College's Emeritus Institute's distinguished lecture series, and these are lecture series they have by various distinguished professors, and they have them every Friday morning in one of the clubhouses in Leisure World, in Laguna Woods Village. And the one I attended was a professor from UCI discussing a student initiative that will try to bring together the Israelis and the Palestinian, Palestinians' people, and talked about how this was utilized in Ireland and how successful it was. And it's called the Olive Tree Initiative. And listening to the lecture, it was really interesting to how bright the students are in Laguna Woods Village and how they ask such incredibly insightful questions. I also attended two plays, Cabaret at Irvine Valley College and Rent at Saddleback College, and these are student productions, and they were fabulous, very low cost and wonderful. And I also attended another Emeritus event, a string band, and it was at one of the clubhouses. And a friend of mine that's 90 years old was in it, and she played the banjo. And the fact that these students, Emeritus students who are 90s and ages, you know, different ages, from age 55 and above, are putting on the performance, and the whole clubhouse at Laguna Woods Village was filled up with students that paid $7 apiece to attend the conference. It was really good to see how much good we do to so many people by offering these classes. Coming up, we're coming up to graduation, and that'll be the 18th, the Saddleback and Irvine Valley College graduation, and I'm looking forward to seeing everyone at the graduations, and then the scholarship ceremonies from both colleges before then, and all the other events leading up to the graduations. And this is a very, very busy year for the trustees, so I'm looking forward to seeing the trustees over and over again and seeing many of you. Thank you.
All right. Trustee Prendergast?
Yeah, I'll, again, as you say, echo a lot of that as well. I do also want to mention that, let's see, Wednesday evening, May 2nd, I will be attending the Orange County School Board Association's Dinner with the keynote speaker, the Community College League's Scott Lay will be speaking, and I'll probably report on how that went next meeting, but it's definitely a way to stay in touch with what's going on throughout not only Orange County, but what's happening at the state level, so I look forward to that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Well, I certainly want to congratulate all of our award recipients, congratulate Dr. Plano on her retirement. And it's just such a wonderful time of year to recognize our faculty, to recognize our students at graduation, and all of the events coming up. So, I was able to attend the Saddleback College Foundation fundraiser, and that was a great event. And I'll now move on and take, ask trustee Lang to give his report.
Thank you. I'm also going to sound like a broken record here a little bit tonight, but congratulations to all the full-time, part-time, and Emeritus Professors of the Year that we've honored tonight. We truly appreciate the great work that you do to sustain the teaching excellence that our students benefit from. Ditto again to all our classified staff, without whose efforts no one else would effectively be able to do the great job that they do here. Special wishes to my erstwhile seatmate, student trustee Jordan Larson, who has represented students at least as well as any past trustee that I can recall and who I know will be hearing great things from in the future. I also noticed among the classified personnel items, the retirement announcement of Sandy Marzilli. And although I'm inclined to pull that and vote against that item, I doubt that it will do much good, so I won't. Instead, I thought I'd express my appreciation to Sandy for the incredible job that she has done for Saddleback and for the entire district, and wish her much joy and fulfillment as she pursues her life adventures beyond our world. And finally, I want to express similar sentiments to Gwen Plano. She's done an absolutely magnificent job at IVC, and I know also our best wishes go out to you and your husband as you continue your adventure as well. Thank you.
And our student trustee, Jordan.
Thank you. Yes, for my last board report, I just want to highlight Dr. David DeLeo receiving this award is very deserved. I had him last semester, and he is truly an inspiring teacher that pushes you past your limits. Also, I just want to say that there is a job in internship fair on Thursday at 10:00 PM in the Saddleback Quad. There's going to be approximately 40 different business entities, some being the LAPD, the FBI, Cox Communications. It's very exciting. I've been talking to the students, and they're excited to make these connections before summer. And finally, I'll just say thank you to the board for the wonderful year. And you haven't seen the last of me. I'll be back to give you a report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right, we're at chancellor's report.
Tonight, we've heard many recognitions. Trustee Prendergast reminded us that we'll be celebrating our students in a few weeks and reflected a little bit on their future lives as they move forward. We've recognized Classified Employees Week. We recognized all our Teachers of the Year. I'd like to add to that my personal thanks to all of our faculty who work so hard and are so dedicated, and they're the lifeblood of our organization, and thank you for your work. I'd like to also recognize Saddleback College, Dr. Burnett and Dean Patty Flanagan for bringing Dr. Vincent Tinto to campus, who is a national leader on the topic of student success. April the 9th, there was a lecture in this room here. All people in the district were invited to. It was a wonderful event. Also, in the same room, Saddleback hosted an event for the chancellor's office on emergency preparedness, and there were 120 visitors here from 50 colleges and universities that got some training on emergency preparedness. I'll throw in here also President Rockmore, and I'd like to commend him for his work with the Community College League of California, with their Advisory Committee on Educational Services. And last of all, I want to add my congratulations on retirement to Vice President Plano and to her husband Larry, who happens to be sitting in the audience back here, and I wish you wonderful retirement.
Great. Thank you very much. Now, we are at board requests for reports. Do I have any board members requesting a report? Do you have that form filled out? If you do? Seeing none, we will move to the discussion item, and that will be presented by several people, but I'm going to let the chancellor introduce that. That's a report that I personally requested. So chancellor, would you please present this item?
Yes, this is a report we're excited about giving. We have a number of our staff members here who work in the offices of the student veterans, and we're going to begin this presentation with some clips from a YouTube video that we ran across. It was originally produced by Montgomery College back near Washington, DC, and it highlights the needs of student veterans in the words of the veterans themselves.
My first year out of the military was definitely a rough transition.
I was being told what to do, how to do it, which way to do it, which was the most effective way to do it, and how to get it done. And when I came to the civilian world, there was nobody pointing me in the right direction, nobody telling me, no, that's not how you apply to job, that's not how you do a resume.
Over there, you're dealing with life and death, and that's pretty much it. And you come back here and deal with stuff like parking tickets and walking the dog and things.
It wrecks your world, you know? You have to rebuild from the ground up, you know? You have to reinvent yourself.
You know, for a lot of veterans, when the war is over for them and they come home, the real battle is beginning, and it's getting used to dealing with life-altering injuries or, you know, you're dealing with all the friends that you lost, or your wife left you, or, you know, just what am I going to do next?
A long and difficult transition to make, and that's if you are consciously aware that you need to make a transition. And for a lot of people, they don't recognize that they have gone through this sudden change and that they are having a hard time with it.
Every sound, every motion, everything sort of triggers you, and some of the stuff can be overwhelming. You have to watch everything that's going on around you. You have to look, listen, and feel everywhere you go, and you're specifically looking for danger. You're specifically looking for signs of things that can possibly hurt you.
It's kind of a head trip. You don't know, okay, well, I'm safe now, but you don't feel safe.
When they introduced the post-9/11 GI Bill, it was a way that I could go over and try something else and still know that the rent was going to be paid and we would still have food on the table. So it really freed up my own mind in being able to try.
A lot of us that don't get 100%, it doesn't cover enough at all. And even the people that do get 100%, if they have a family, or if they have a mortgage, or a car payment, they have to find another way to support themselves, so.
There you have these war heroes working at Giant, or, you know, bagging groceries, or, you know, filling up gas for you, or something like that, and it's sad.
And if nobody's there to guide these veterans and these, pretty much these kids, you know, they're not gonna, they're gonna get lost, you know, and so they might fall into those things that a lot of veterans have fallen into. There's a lot of things that you're more prone to, homelessness, depression, addiction. Those are all things that you see a lot in veterans.
It's pretty much the support system, the idea of having these people around you that can actually give you that push.
Just having that relationship with somebody and not knowing that you're not just a paycheck for the school, that you're actually a student, you know, who needs help, who needs direction, who needs guidance.
Have those people to talk to who understand and who are living on both sides and who can liaison with the school when we can't.
And I found out many different things that I would not have found out if there was no program here.
The more of these stable institutions we have, you know, the better off we are, the better we feel about ourselves, and the more successful we actually become.
It's a way for us to kind of heal ourselves. Being able to talk with other guys that have been in the same situations as you helps, because you're not alone. And that's the best part about the office is that I know that I'm not alone.
I really feel like if there was a program that was geared towards the soldiers, that was goal-setting and counseling to help them direct themselves in a direction, that would be helpful.
A mentor who's been through who knows how many things and guiding us along, not to show us the end point, but just to take us to the next step. How do I get to the next step, the next step, the next step?
I think it would be advantageous to the student veterans at every campus if there was maybe a veterans' club central to that campus.
Is to embrace your soldier that's returning, to love on him the same way that you did before he deployed.
Good evening, president Padberg, members of the board, and chancellor Portner. My name is Teri Fugeman. I'm the District Director of Public Affairs and Government Relations, and I want to thank you for inviting us here to share the important work that we're doing on behalf of veterans. Veterans hold a special place in my heart. Veterans hold a special place in my heart. I was a military brat, grew up a military brat, and was also a military wife, and so I know quite a bit about veterans, and this year has been very humbling and really honorable to serve. Tonight, you will hear about the many ways that we are reaching out to assist our veteran students, and one of those is through legislative advocacy. As you know, our district is a member of the Orange County Legislative Task Force, which is a consortium of all four community college districts in Orange County, and we get together once a month to discuss legislative issues and also to advocate on behalf of our 275,000 students. This year, the task force focused many of our efforts on veterans. We invited two guest members also this year, our own Terrence Nelson from Saddleback College, who is the Assistant Dean and Vets Director, and Terrence is also the president of the Region Eight Veterans Program Director Consortium, and it's been very helpful to have him there. The two organizations have had a great deal of communication through him, offering support for each other as we go to Sacramento and Washington DC and advocate for our veterans. Another guest member was Rancho Santiago's Student Trustee. His name is Andrew Hansen. He's a Marine veteran and a student at Santa Ana College, and as a veteran student, Andrew was able to share his personal experiences, and we found this to be highly effective with our legislators. They hung on his every word. They didn't really want to talk to the rest of us as much as they wanted to hear from him, and so we were happy to have him along. He's very articulate. In fact, this task force recently sent him to Sacramento to testify before the Higher Education Committee, the Assembly of Higher Education Committee. I also want to acknowledge the hard work and commitment of trustee Padberg and chancellor Portner, who walked many miles of hallways with me, conducted many legislative visits, and continue to support our follow-up efforts. Sorry, I sort of missed that slide. Let's stop and take a peek at everybody. There are an estimated 2.2 million veterans residing in California, more than any other state. California community colleges currently serve 28,000 veteran students and 10,000 active-duty students. That number is expected to increase dramatically as troops in Iraq and Afghanistan complete their service and return home. The Veterans Administration estimates that nearly 40,000 additional veterans will return to California alone. Many of those veterans will turn to colleges to use their well-deserved education benefits and as a way to transition back into civilian life. However, these veterans often face financial, family, health, or healing issues that take precedence over starting their educational plans. Unfortunately, state and federal laws are not aligned to support these realities, and that's why we focused our legislative efforts this year on two main priorities. Out-of-state tuition. South Orange County Community College District, which borders Camp Pendleton, wants to be the first stop for veterans returning to our district, but current state and federal laws impose a significant burden on them. Under current federal law provided in the GI Bill, the VA will pay up to $17,500 for private school tuition, but will no longer pay for out-of-state tuition at public institutions. This came into effect in August, this last August with the changes. They will only pay for in-state tuition and fees. For Student Veterans without state residency, and there are many, this can result in out-of-state pocket costs of up to $9,000 per year, the same rate faced by our international students. State laws grant veterans stationed and discharged in California in-state tuition for the minimum period of time necessary to establish their residency, and that period is one year, but this clock starts ticking immediately upon their discharge, and that creates an unrealistic timetable for many. Currently, 15% of veterans use their GI Bill benefits within one year of discharging from service, and 25% start using them within two years. Fourteen states are now providing some sort of out-of-state tuition waivers or programs for veterans to address this specific issue. Priority registration. Current law enacted last year through SB 813 extends priority enrollment to veterans at community colleges and CSUs for four years following their discharge date. However, this short timeframe is insufficient for veterans to complete their educational goals. It is especially problematic for an estimated 47% of veterans who face physical or mental wartime injuries. Veterans have 15 years to use their educational benefits under the GI Bill, and we are proposing that California extend veterans' priority registration to 15 years to align it with their federal benefits. Changes are definitely needed. Our Legislative Task Force spent time in Sacramento and Washington DC this year, visiting dozens of legislators and committee members. We also drafted language and sought sponsors to author bills and support these changes. I'm happy to report significant progress on three new bills that have already passed through the California Assembly Higher Education and Veterans Affairs Committees. The first is AB 2250. This would waive out-of-state tuition for veterans and their spouses attending community colleges, CSUs, and possibly UCs. AB 2478. This bill extends the out-of, this bill extends the window of out-of-state tuition exemption from one year to four years, and this was directly initiated through the efforts of the Legislative Task Force. AB 2133 extends priority registration for veterans to 15 years to align with their federal GI benefits. The State Chancellor's Office is supporting these bills with added provisions to ensure that students comply with the educational intent of the legislation. Our task force and all four community college districts in Orange County have written letters of support for all three of these bills. In Washington DC, we discussed the out-of-state tuition issue with legislators. It was generally agreed that the changes in the GI Bill heavily favor private colleges and unintentionally limit access to public colleges. As a follow-up to our visits, the Orange County Legislative Task Force is supporting two policy requests for consideration by congressional offices. One is a request to the VA to amend the language in the GI Bill 2.0 to cover out-of-state tuition costs for the minimum amount of time needed to establish state residency. Now, the difference here is that the clock would start upon registration for classes rather than upon their discharge, so that would give them the time on the front end that they might need to get their act together when they get back. The other request is to add language that would enable veterans to use foundation funding to participate in the Yellow Ribbon Program. Now, the Yellow Ribbon Program is a scholarship matching program provided by the VA. Currently, California students are effectively locked out of this opportunity because the program prohibits both the use of public funds and the use of college foundation scholarships for the match. The program is widely used by private colleges to offset tuition amounts that exceed the Tonight, you will hear about the impressive efforts at both colleges to provide much-needed assistance to our Student Veterans. It's important to remember that many more veterans are coming home, and the services may need to expand to accommodate them. Recently, the four community college chancellors in Orange County met to discuss some possible pilot programs that could be used for regional collaboration. Expanded Student Veteran Services was on that list. After their selfless service to our country, we owe it to our veterans to welcome them home and support their success on our college campuses. Thank you.
My name is Don Limbo, and I am the Senior Fiscal and Veteran Specialist at Saddleback College. This evening, I will be giving a short presentation on Irvine Valley College's and Saddleback College's Veterans Benefits Office and their programs. The Saddleback and Irvine Valley College Veterans Benefits Offices are charged with the administration of the Veterans Administration and Department of Defense Education Benefit Programs. There are a number of these education benefit programs. Since most of our Student Veterans at our colleges use the post-9/11 GI Bill, also known as the new GI Bill, I will be focusing primarily on that program this evening. The Irvine Valley College Veterans Education Benefits Office is part of that college's Financial Aid Office and reports to the IVC Financial Aid Director, Darryl Cox. At Saddleback College, the Veterans Benefit Office is part of the Student Payment Office and reports to the Director of Fiscal Services, Carol Hilton. I'd like to make a note that Carol apologized for not being here tonight. She just had knee surgery, and she's recuperating from that. She really did try to be here. Each of the college's Veterans Benefit Offices has staff within it, which consists of several certifying officials and assistants. There are several college staff members who are veterans themselves. These include myself and Howard Dwight, who is here this evening, who also works at Saddleback College. I am a retired Marine Corps Lieutenant Colonel with 24 years of military service, and Dwight is a retired Marine Corps Gunnery Sergeant with 22 years of military service. There are also Veterans Administration Work-Study Students who man and staff the offices within both colleges. With them at hand, new veteran students seeking to start their education benefits are greeted by and introduced to the college by fellow veterans who understand their perspectives and their issues. This is a tremendous asset to veterans as they assimilate themselves into the college community. The VA Work-Study Program provides additional staffing at no cost to the college because the VA pays the work-studies fees, not the college's. As I noted earlier, our office's primary responsibility to veterans is the administration of all Veterans Administration, or VA, and Department of Defense, or DOD, education programs. Each of these programs is listed on the current slide. We have been administering these programs for decades now. Each of these programs has its own eligibility criteria and regulations, so administering them is a very complex project. Of all the education programs we administer, over 85% of our VA students use the post-9/11 or the new GI Bill, which came into effect in 2009. This new program's benefits have had a significant effect on both colleges and on our veterans, so I would like to provide a little bit of detail about the new GI Bill. The enhancements to GI Bill benefits enacted by Congress when it passed the post-9/11 GI Bill resulted in a tremendous increase in our Student-Veteran population. The major change was an increase in the amount of money Student Veterans get to attend colleges. Under the old GI Bill, students received approximately $1,400 a month for a full-time student, and they had to pay for their college fees and their books out of that monthly stipend. Under the new GI Bill, they're given $2,000 a month, and the VA pays the college fees directly to the college. It does not come out of their monthly stipend, and the Student Veterans also get a semester book stipend as well. Veterans use this monthly payment to pay for their living expenses such as food and rent while attending college. The additional money provided by the post-9/11 GI Bill created a significant increase in the number of veterans able to attend college. What's been the effect of the new GI Bill on our colleges? As you can tell by this slide, the VA student population at Irvine Valley College increased 100% since the advent of the new GI Bill. At Saddleback College, the VA student population increased by over 130%. In addition to this increase in population, the workload per student has increased by 100%. Unlike the old GI Bill, under which students paid their fees to the college directly from their monthly stipend, colleges now have to charge VA for fees, return funds each time a student drops a class, charge additional funds each time a student adds a class. This obviously requires extensive and continuous accounting on the college's Veterans Benefit Officers part. In addition to the administration of all of the Veterans Administration and Department of Defense education programs, there are also other services that the Irvine Valley College Veterans Benefit Office and the Saddleback College Veterans Benefit Office offer as well. Our offices are open days and evenings to accommodate VA students' individual needs. Some of our veterans have to work days and can only attend in the evenings, so we have evening hours so they can not only attend class, but can conduct their business. We provide new VA students with individual orientations to ensure they are familiar with their specific GI Bill programs, regulations, and procedures. We provide payment deferrals, which means the students do not have to pay upfront. We simply defer payment until the Veterans Administration forwards us the payment for the fees. We also assist students whenever necessary to help them resolve problems they may encounter with VA. Inevitably, there are glitches in the system, and we step in and help them resolve their problems with VA because we speak VA's language. Finally, we work closely with the Vet Centers on both campuses to ensure seamless coordination of all veteran services. How have we improved our service to veterans? The college veterans offices, Vet Center, and Admissions and Records Offices on both campuses worked together to establish priority registration for our veterans well before this was passed into law by the state. The veterans offices have also worked with the Admissions and Records Offices to make it easier for VA students to establish residency. As noted earlier, this is important because VA does not pay non-resident fees. VA students are advised during their initial orientation with the veterans offices on campus of all the steps they need to establish residency. As a result of this work, 96% of IVC's VA students and 97% of Saddleback College's VA students get qualified for residency status within one semester. Other improvements include conducting symposiums to continuously educate students on their education benefits and various programs that are available to them. Finally, the Board of Trustees recently approved an additional position in each college's Veterans Benefit Office. The effect of this increase in staffing will allow the veterans offices to accommodate the increased workload and at the same time, maintain or reduce VA benefit processing time, which directly translates into veterans receiving their pay as quickly as possible. Finally, what do we need? If VA student enrollment continues to increase, and we've heard some indication earlier tonight that it may, staffing will become an issue. Also, office space at both colleges has not grown commensurate with the increase in the college's veteran population. Continued growth in the veteran population will require additional space. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time.
Don and Zeke and their VA Benefits teams, they're quite humble. They do a wonderful job in accurate benefit processing and make sure the guys get paid, and they really are welcoming, so thank you for what you're doing. VA benefits processing is something that we're required to do. When it comes to veteran services, it's the will of the institution. It's by choice, and our district has chosen to put substantial resources, effort, and time into veteran services. I know we've had a little bit of kumbaya moments earlier with the celebrations of the successes of some of our faculty and staff, but I'm going to continue down that vein because it's--
I'm going to interrupt you just a minute to ask you to introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Terrence Nelson. I am the Assistant Dean of Counseling Special Programs as well as the Vets Director. It takes a full campus to provide veteran services, and, you know, I want to speak to the faculty of this district. We have amazing faculty who have gone above and beyond, giving extra time tutoring, offering time to let them use their textbooks for the veterans who can't pay for textbooks, just really going above and beyond the call. So thank you to the faculty. The classified have really stepped up as well. An example of this is just this Thanksgiving, our Classified Senate. They were able to feed 35 needy Student Veteran families with Thanksgiving dinners. That was, again, over and above service, something that they were called to do but did not need to. It was not within their contract. They stepped above and beyond and saw a need. So, again, thank you to the Classified Senate, and then goes back to executive and leadership from the top. President Rockmore and President Burnett have been very forceful in this and vocal about their interest in serving the Student Veterans population. We spoke about Vice President Plano and her efforts, but I want to thank the executives for their leadership. President Burnett was recognized last year for visionary leadership among Student Veterans of California, so thank you. When we look at veteran services, any student services program, you need to do an environmental scan or a needs assessment. We really reviewed the needs of our Student Veterans. It's a mature student group, and they know what their needs are, and we have many services out in the community and on campus that we just needed to-- out in the community and on campus that we just needed to bridge and partner with. The next step is looking at what sphere of influence you have, and here it's broken down into three different phases. Where do we look to provide service? We spoke about the residency item, and that really comes down to our outreach efforts. Our student-veteran population is quite diverse in this district. With that said, the predominant group is male infantry Marines from North Base Pendleton. IVC does a great deal of outreach to the Los Alamos Joint Forces Base. And Saddleback College, with our proximity to Camp Pendleton, we do our outreach down at North Base Camp Pendleton and other facilities. These student veterans from North Base are predominantly infantry Marines. They've seen the probably most difficult battles and warfare in the last 10 years. We have students who have fought in Fallujah and the initial invasion of Iraq. Over in Afghanistan right now, some of these units are taking the largest casualties. So, these combat veterans are coming back with the scars of war. What are we doing to serve these veterans? What are we doing to outreach and educate them early about what they need to do? Couple examples, this is our use of technology in our websites, our email system, e-advised system. We do substantial outreach. As you see, over 75 outreach events or visits just in 2011 alone to get these veterans ready while they're active-duty military and prepared to transition out. One of the programs I'll speak to real briefly here is the Warriors to Scholars Program. It was recognized by the base as well as the state offices for excellence. We brought up a bus full of active-duty Marines, 20 active-duty Marines and sailors, for a half-day at Saddleback College to talk to them about their transition to any institution that they would be going to. It was more important for them to come on campus and feel and have a tangible understanding of what higher education was. Through our relationships and our transfer students at UC Irvine, we then bused them up to UC Irvine to get an exposure to a research university. Many of these students are first-generation collegegoers, and they didn't have a connection to what a college was. They didn't know what it felt like to be there. So, we were able to get them up to UC Irvine and tour the campus from transition student-veterans, successful student-veterans that were Saddleback graduates. This is an example of us getting out of our silos and partnering with our neighbors to serve our veterans better.
Pass it on to Darrell.
And if you could just introduce yourself, please.
Yes, I will. Thank you very much. Darrell Cox, Director of Financial Aid, Scholarships, and Veteran Affairs at Irvine Valley. Phase two, Community Building. Before I go there, I'd like to take a moment. Veterans in the audience, if you would please stand. Every generation, every veteran. Thank you very much. My point here, and my point here is that they look like us, they walk like us, they talk like us, and we sometimes don't know that they're among us. It's a very large population, growing, and we're going to have more and more veterans on our campus. At Irvine Valley, the veterans have adapted, if you will, to what we've been able to provide for them. It started off as a desk in the middle of the financial aid office, and it got so crazy that we had to get them out of there. There just wasn't enough room, and so they were transferred to the Student Rec Center there for a while. And then when Dr. Plano vacated her office, they moved into the second story of the Student Services Building for a while. They're currently located in the library. And a part of me was shaking when that concept first came. Why would you put 12 bulls in a china store? But the veterans have embraced the library, and the library has embraced the veterans. They have acclimated themselves. They hardly know that they're in there, and yet they continue to operate just as they have. Along the way, they've built what they affectionately refer to as the War Room. And this is an office within the office where they gather, they tutor each other, they have veteran club meetings in there, they support each other. With the Veterans Club, it has spawned leadership in other clubs on campus. We have veterans in the Transfer Club, the Bee's Garden, which is our horticulture area. They are engaged in the campus in positive ways. They've developed a recycling program on campus. They want to build things and do things, and we are providing them with an environment where they can talk about those things that they want to do and do them. They engage this campus every day. The campus community has stood up and answered the call for those veterans on campus who are in need of food and supplies. And last, a couple of weeks ago, Friday, with a contact via the campus, a food distribution program was initiated, and veterans were given an average of about 30 pounds of canned goods, beans, rice, staples. And that went a long ways, and we hope to continue building that program as well.
Darrell and I are going back and forth, so no need for the applause between the PowerPoint slides. We felt this is a real show of the collaboration we have between the campuses. Darrell and I speak a lot. I know the Veterans Payment Offices speak significantly, share the best practices, so we felt this was the best format. We are really proud at Saddleback College to have put up the First Veterans Resource Center in our region. We're very proud to be a leader in the field. Just this month, we had four other institutions visit us and take our program plan back to their campuses. We actually have been the model that has been used at 15 other campuses just in our region. We're very proud of that, but we also know, as the proverb said, we're 95% or 50% of the way there. We have much more to do. We use this Veterans Center, as Darrell was talking about, the War Room, to build the camaraderie that these student-veterans had in their units. The brotherhood, the sisterhood, the connections, and a network of support for when someone's falling through the cracks. Just today, we had a, what I would call, and he wouldn't call himself this, but a hero, a Marine hero, crying and sobbing in an office, in an emotional crisis. And that gentleman went back and forth with me and the Veterans Counselor, working him through his issues and his challenges. Whatever triggered that is not the point. It's that the baggage was too much. It was too heavy for him to carry alone. We needed a center there to provide that support. That was just today. I'm going to go into a couple other points here with the Vet-to-Vet Service. Any given day you walk by the veterans, the Vet Center on our campus up in SSC 207, you'll see up to 40 veterans that come through our doors. At times, there's two dozen up there in about a 400-square-foot facility. It spills out, but it's a showing of camaraderie and community. One of the important items within our program is the Boots-to-Books Course. The Department of Labor offers a TAPS program, Transition Assistance Program, and all these vets have probably gone through that program. We hear mixed reviews, and many veterans don't know how to transition, how to reintegrate after going through that process. We have turned into the Transition Program on our community college campuses. We are 100% access, open access, so our veterans are coming to us to receive those benefits, and we're providing that transition. So, we created a Boots-to-Books Course, which is through applied psychology or counseling, as many people know. I personally teach one up at Golden West College, is Overload, for the student-veterans at Golden West College. It's a transitional model for 16 weeks to reintegrate you into the college and civilian world. Use the basic curriculum standards but enhance that for the needs of student-veterans. And we're proud of having offered one every semester. It's been so successful with 30 to 35 veterans attending this course that we've spread that out to English and Mathematics, Developmental English Mathematics Course, to create a learning community, and it's called the Vets Academy. This is something that, as we look long-term, we want to spread this learning community
At Irvine Valley, we have the blessing of Robert Melendez. He's our Veterans Counselor. He is a full-time general counselor with a 50% obligation to the Veterans Program. We're thankful for him. The veterans provide campus tours. We call them the road trips, where they gather up and travel out to other four-year institutions to see what the offerings are and talk to the people on campus there. The Vet-to-Vet tutoring is very much like what Terrence referred to as the veterans helping themselves, making sure nobody falls through the cracks. They guide each other, they help each other, they support each other, and they maintain those relationships that Terrence also talked about. Peer guidance. The veterans realize that they're not alone. And when they're in these centers and amongst their comrades and their friends and their brothers and their sisters, they realize that they're not alone, and that's a very important component. Veteran scholarships is growing. The donors within the foundation are stepping up and designating their dollars to the veterans' population. We're thankful for that. And campus employment. These individuals are good employees. They're eager to work. They want to work. They apply themselves. They're good employees, and we're finding more and more opportunities for them on campus via the VA Work Study, the Federal Work Study Program, and the campus employment that's available. The veterans are sought after because they are good employees with good work habits.
As a civilian, my father was Navy. My brother's a Colonel in the Army, is actually an English professor at West Point right now, so I have a connection, but I'm a civilian. And one of the most important items that we've added to our Vets Program, and thank you to the Faculty Prioritization Committee and the executive team for hiring faculty last year, we were able to bring on Colin Williams. If you could raise your hand, Colin. He's our full-time Veterans Counselor. It's very rare for an institution to have a full-time dedicated Veterans Counselor. It is a major, major asset to our institution. Colin is an Army veteran with a vocational rehab background and a DSPS background, so that varied experience gives him the skills to truly serve this population, and it adds to his dedication. We've also added a DSPS Veterans Counselor who comes in on Fridays, and as I talk about the partners later, we close the loop with providing accommodations in the classroom by allowing that DSPS Counselor set aside Fridays when there's fewer veterans on campus to process accommodations in the classroom if a vet may have short-term memory loss and need a note taker or extra time on tests. The stigma is still there, but having that Counselor in there helps decrease the stigma. By the way, as we talked about jobs between the VA Office and the Vet Center, we employ over a dozen veterans, student veterans, per year on campus at Saddleback. I know IVC employs several as well. I think that's a wonderful transitional tool.
Could you just explain DSPS?
Disabled Student Program and Service. I oversee that program as well.
That's what it was, but I need to hear it.
Yeah, it's the program to provide accommodations and support systems to disabled students, which, you know, they have the rights to under our federal compliance, under our federal
The internal partnerships, this is the advantage that we have in the community college system. The offices that are posted on this slide represent the core of support for the entire campus, and the advantage that we have is that our campus community communicates with each other, talks about gearing up, if you will, for this population surge that's coming and will continue to come. When the Admissions and Records Office can help us identify and contact veterans on the front side so that we know who they are upon admission to the institution, it's extremely helpful. Financial aid, Health Center, everybody's on board, asking what they can do to support the veterans and be a part of what is the next wave, if you will, of student populations. So, we've got an advantage here because of the size that we have at the community college system and the support system, the communication that takes place amongst these offices. Everybody's on board with gearing up for the veteran surge in population. There are many other offices not listed on this slide, EOPS, the Learning Centers, the Tutorial Centers. Everybody has engaged the veteran population.
We know, even though we have robust services on campus, we are not the answer always for all students. We can't provide all services, nor should we. If there are excellent services out in the community, we must partner with those services to, again, build that safety net. We have a large group, but mainly three volunteers, and each year we have over 1,000 hours of volunteerism. I want to thank Joyce Van Shack, who's in the crowd. She is often volunteering and helping out our student veterans on and off campus, but we have many volunteers. Two big items, I know we're running a bit long. South Orange County Vet Center, they provide counseling therapists. They actually have a psychiatrist and counselors on staff. They ran their operation in Garden Grove for Orange County, and because of the growth and the success of our program down here, they actually moved to Crown Valley and Marguerite. They moved their facilities. They actually hire our student veterans as outreach aides for their facility and have them on our campus one day a week in our Vet Center to encourage use of mental health care services. We're actually in discussions with them of potentially even providing the counseling within our health centers on campus. It would be something innovative, new. The VA is also interested in bridging the gap because the OIF, OEF veterans, Iraq and Afghanistan veterans, are not taking access of the health care benefits they've earned, so they want to come to the veterans, which means come to the college campuses, and so we're bridging gaps with that as well. The other item I want to talk about is the AMVETS Service Officer Program. That's a volunteer, or it's actually an AMVETS employee right now that provides navigation through the VA system of anything non-educational benefit-related, so health care items, disability claims. What happens is when you're discharged, you get a disability rating. You're given a disability rating. That's often fairly low, and so many veterans want to appeal that rating to rerate to get more support systems. That's the active magnet to get the veteran in, and after they see John Castillo, who is our AMVETS Service Officer in the Vet Center, he walks them to the next office, to the DSPS Counselor, to provide an accommodation in the classroom. So, again, it's closing the loop of all of our services.
These partnerships are extremely important for us. As the budgetary crisis continues, these partnerships are going to be even more important, and we are thankful that we're able to develop them. Our next steps, we have here at Saddleback on Wednesday, a Year End Recognition Event. We have Veteran Resource Fairs, Veteran Symposium, offered by IVC, Second Annual coming up, Veterans Field Day Flags. The 911 Ceremony is important to the veterans. Many of them, that is the reason they joined with the 9/11 event, and they have a candlelight vigil to acknowledge that. Again, liaison with our university partners, UC Irvine, Cal State Fullerton, extremely important, and we're making great inwards there. Summer Break Program is something we've partnered with the Broadman School, which is a part of the Chapman System, which will fill that summer void. And Veteran Transfer Workshops, Veteran on Campus, Will Corbett has initiated that, extremely successful in getting veterans to think beyond Irvine Valley or Saddleback in terms of where to go next and what school offers the best program from them. We're doing a lot of good things, a lot of things happening with the veterans' population, and will continue to do so.
Those exit points and the successes are what it's all about. It's making sure the veterans attain a degree or a certificate and transfer on or go into employment. All of our services should be centered right around that. We have substantial collaboration between institutions. I want to give a special thanks to Dean Rocky Sefoni and Dean David Gatewood for their efforts in a collaborative regional grant, which is related with the Orange County Legislative Task Force, our efforts. Golden West College, Santa Ana College, IVC, and Saddleback are getting together for a regional grant. We're meeting tomorrow, actually, at ATEP to discuss this. It would be focused on biomedical manufacturing. It's a direct-to-employment manufacturing program that all of our colleges host a portion of, and so we're looking at developing a program. If we receive funding, wonderful. If we don't, we have a nice template of collaborative efforts that we can still continue to work towards. It's, from the veteran's side, they're asking me to spearhead this and work with the other veterans' programs, but from the instructional side and from the administrative side, Dean Sefoni and Dean Gatewood are really taking some leadership. We also hold meetings with IVC and Saddleback College with the Irvine One-Stop. They have set aside funds through EDD for veteran services, and so we make access to that for some job placement services. Another item in here I really want to stress is something that's near and dear to my heart is the Region Eight Veterans Program Director Consortium. We meet every two months with, now it's up to 22 institutions, universities and community colleges within Region Eight. We share best practices. We have presentations from the VA. We talk about transferring and collaborative efforts. That's where the Brandman and Vanguard program, to fill our gap when we're not offering courses, they're offering the exact courses we need. They worked with Colin Williams to select those courses off of student educational plans, and so student veterans can continue their housing allowance, continue their benefits. They've modified their schedules, and they offer the exact courses we asked for. They're fully yellow-riven schools, so at those institutions, you pay $0 as a veteran on benefits. So, those are some of the type of collaborations that we work with IVC and other institutions
We're doing a lot, and we have a lot more to do. And our future goals and potential needs, we would like to see full Veterans One-Stop services at both campuses. Thing to remember here is that IVC and Saddleback are unique campuses amongst themselves, and we don't want to mirror each other's operations because we can't. We're different in subtle ways and in important ways, and there's nothing to keep us from collaborating with our best practices and our vision of what a veteran-friendly campus is. We need increased staffing and resources. The population's going to grow. It's going to strip us of our ability to serve them shortly, and we need to start looking at staffing and resource. Increased regional collaboration, Terrence touched on that. We're doing a great job there. We will continue to move forward in those areas. Book loans and emergency loans. will continue to move forward in those areas. Book loans and emergency loans, extremely important, extremely needed. We're finding ways to do that via our foundation accounts. We need to do more. Increase student veterans on jobs. We need to make job employment for veterans on campus a number-one priority. We need to inform more campus offices that the veterans are available, that they're good employees, that they're good workers. Veterans Rates for Child Care, extremely important. If there's a way we can subsidize the childcare for veterans on campus, we need to do that. There is a definite need there. Veterans Clock Tower at IVC is a project that's been on the books for several years now. We are optimistic and hopeful that our new foundation will embrace that and put that clock tower on our campus. We have a beautiful new outdoor theater, the setting is perfect. We just need $300,000 to make it, finish it up. Full-time Veterans Counselor at IVC is definitely needed. Our part-time Counselor does an excellent job, but he will be shortly overwhelmed with the numbers. And again, we don't want to duplicate external services, and we want to collaborate and move forward. We want to help you, help this district build a veteran-friendly district. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight.
I want to thank all the presenters for excellent report. There may be questions, so I'm going to open it up. Trustee Meldow.
Yes, I'd just like to say that I remember the refer to Reduction in Force after Vietnam, and we can't let that happen again. I think we should all be very proud of what we're doing here at IVC and at Saddleback and under the leadership of the Presidents, and I think that we need to continue. I saw the initial figures of what the Reduction in Force is probably going to be after we wind down in Afghanistan, and it is staggering and kind of frightening. So I think that we're going to count on both Presidents to hold the Board's feet to the fire and remember that this is an important part of what we do as a community college. Thank you.
And I'm sure that our Presidents will be coming back to us with requests based on this, and congratulations on a job well done so far, and obviously, leadership in this whole event and effort, so we really appreciate all of the work that's occurring on both campuses. And this, trustee Prendergast has a comment.
I just, again, I think the things that we've been doing on the two campuses and having toured specifically the veterans facility, the old veterans facility at IVC, I have not been to the new one yet, and knowing what they have at Saddleback, those are great things, but I don't think it'd be overstated enough how important the Legislative Task Force portion of this is, to get that done at the higher level to make sure that those needs are being met. I am particularly concerned that there's a flat fee of $2,000 when we have a higher cost of living. In Orange County, particularly, $2,000 to pay for food and housing. I don't think, I don't know how they would do that, so I don't know if there's any way we can push that the Legislature take into account cost of living when they establish those rates. I mean, I know they're not busting with money either, but it certainly means a lot that we're doing that.
Okay. Seeing no other comments, thank you again, and we will move on. Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Melchecker had a comment.
Just really briefly, I really appreciate the presentation, and again, what we're doing for our veterans is just so important because of what our veterans did for us and have been doing for us and continue to do for us, so let's continue working to help our veterans and let's help them on our campuses, as I know we're doing so well now. Thank you.
Any other trustees? I don't want to cut anyone off. Thank you very much. We'll go now to our Consent Calendar items, and do I hear a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Consent Calendar?
Okay, and I believe there would be some items we would need to pull based on the vote, and because some of these items apply to some of the people who would be voting, so we need to pull those items. That would be 5.15, 5.16, and 5.17. This has to do with trustee absences from meetings, so I recommend that we pull those items. Are there other items to pull?
What?
Oh, you're right. You're absolutely right. So we'll just say it's 5.14 and 5.16. And seven, yeah, sorry. No, I'm sorry, not 1.4, 1.6 and 1.7. All right. Any other items needing to be pulled from the Consent Calendar? Trustee Prendergast?
I will second the motion to approve the Consent Calendar withdrawing 5.15 and 5.16, oh, I'm sorry, 5.16, 5.17.
Right. All right, let's all vote on the motion. Trustee J., you need to vote. Okay, the matter carries unanimously with one trustee absent and one student advisory yes vote. So now we will vote on 5.16, and that has to do with payment of a trustee absent, and that would be payment of trustee J., so I assume he will want, do I hear a second move by trustee Lang and seconded by trustee Prendergast. Let's vote. Trustee J. abstained and one trustee absent and four, I'm sorry, five yes votes and one student advisory yes vote. Thank you. 5.17 has to do with payment of trustee Melchecker, moved by trustee Lang, seconded by trustee Meldow, and let's vote on that item. Okay, this item passes with trustee Melchecker abstaining and trustee Pointe's absent and one student advisory yes vote. All right, we are now at 6.1, and this is an item that is for a public hearing, and as we have to do with a public hearing, we will have to adjourn the meeting. Before we do that, I'm going to ask Vice Chancellor Deborah Fitzsimmons to provide an introduction.
Thank you. The agenda item pertains to a public hearing to consider an energy management system agreement between South Orange County Community College District and Computrol Incorporated, as stated on the agenda item. Government Code 4217.10 authorizes that the Board of Trustees of a Community College District can enter into negotiated agreements for the installation and/or financing of energy conservation measures, and that a public hearing is to be held prior to entering into the agreement. Computrol proposes an energy conservation project at the Saddleback College, including the installation, programming, and commissioning of a new energy management system. The overall cost of the project is $1.4 million to be funded by Basic Aid and Saddleback College Schedule Maintenance Funds. The project will save an estimated $42,900 per year with a one-time rebate of $73,500 from the California Community College and Investor Owner Utility Partnership. Brandy Delena and John Ozerovich are both with us this evening if the Board or audience has any detailed questions. Thank you.
Does the Board have any questions to staff to assist in their understanding of the energy management system or project? Okay, seeing, okay, we, excuse me, we have to adjourn the public meeting and now open up the public hearing, so I will now open the public hearing, and comments are now open. If anyone from the public has any comments, do we have anyone asking to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. The public hearing is now closed, and we can move forward. Does staff have any responses to anything so far? Okay, so now we have a call for a motion and a vote. Do you want to make a motion? Trustee Lang moved, and trustee J. seconded, so let's vote on the item. Okay, matter carries unanimously with one trustee absent and one student advisory yes vote. Very good. We are now at 6.2, and that's an item for approval, Energy Management System Agreement, and I'll let the Chancellor present that item, or, all right, Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons, go ahead.
This is the contract related to the item in the public hearing.
Okay, very good. Moved by trustee J., seconded by trustee Lang, I'm sorry. Any comments or questions by Board members? Seeing none, let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously with one trustee absent and one student advisory yes vote. Very good. We're at 6.3, and this is Grant Acceptance for Technical Skills Training for Saddleback College, the Orange County Bridge to Engineering with the City of Santa Ana Workforce Investment Area. And who will be presenting this? Trust, oh, I'm sorry, President Barnett, go ahead.
We're very excited. This is a new grant for Saddleback College, and it's helping to prepare our folks for careers in the engineering field, and particularly work with our Mass Science and Engineering Division who is leading this.
Great. Any comments or questions? No? Do I hear a move by trustee Lang, seconded by trustee J.? All right, let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously with one trustee absent and one student advisory yes vote. 6.4, Irvine Valley College Grant Acceptance, Career Development Work-Based Learning Linkages to Professional Organizations, Year Four, and I assume we'll have President Rockmore present this item.
Yes, absolutely. We're excited that this is a four-year renewal on this grant. It's from the State Chancellor's office, and the purpose of the grant is to provide for academic programs, internships, and placement in businesses for jobs, and so, thank you very much.
Great. This is terrific to have all these grants. All right, moved by trustee Lang and seconded by, who was that? Trustee J. All right, thank you, and was it trustee J. or trustee Meldow seconded it?
I think it was Mike.
Okay, trustee Meldow seconded it. We have to get the record straight, so no one seems to wish to comment. Let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously with one trustee absent and one student advisory yes vote. Very good. We're at 6.5, which are Board Policy Revisions, and these are for discussion and approval. And Chancellor be presenting these, or any?
These are six Board Policies that have already gone to the Board for first reading. This is Mel's second reading. They've already gone through the Board Policy and Administrative Regulation Committee, and we're recommending their approval.
Okay, and Policies A through D are the exhibits, right? Any comments or questions or concerns on these? We've already discussed them. Questions or comments from Board members?
Move approval.
Moved by trustee J., seconded by trustee Lang, and we'll vote on the item. Okay, carries unanimously with one trustee absent and one student advisory yes vote. 6.6, Board Policy Revisions, these are for review and study instead of approval, so we can accept these for review and study. I suppose we would need to have a motion for that.
Move except.
Moved by trustee Lang and seconded by trustee Prendergast. Any questions or comments before we vote on the motion? It seems pretty clear what the revisions are, so seeing none, let's vote on the item. Carries unanimously with one trustee absent and one student advisory yes vote. 6.7, Academic Personnel Actions, this is for approval, and I believe Mr. Bougaye, Dr. Bougaye will present this.
Move approval.
Okay, no changes. Moved by trustee Melchecker, seconded by trustee J. Comments or questions? Seeing none, let's vote on the approval of this item. Matter carries unanimously with one trustee absent, one student advisory yes vote. We now move to Classified Personnel Actions, and this is for approval, and, thank you, okay. So comments or questions about this? Do you have a motion, please?
I move approval.
Trustee Melchecker, and seconded by trustee Meldow. Let's vote. All right, matter carries unanimously with one trustee absent and one student advisory yes vote. And with that, we are at 7.1, and this is Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College Professors of the Year. Didn't we do this already? Yeah, okay, I'm not sure why this is in again.
Just the information.
Just the information item. Any comments about that or questions? Guess not. We'll move to 7.2, Outside Speakers for both Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College. Any comments or questions? Okay. Basic Aid Report is 7.3. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons, do you want to talk about this?
Well, I just wanted to point out that we have changed the format for the Basic Aid Report. Instead of one report where we had various projects mingled together into one report with very small font and very hard to sort of read, what we tried to do is sort them in order, so we have closed inactive projects at the beginning with a subtotal, then we have capital improvement projects next with a subtotal, scheduled maintenance projects with a subtotal, and then district various technology projects, and then other. And then that way, at least they're organized in some kind of orderly way. Once a year, we will have the closed project list. Otherwise, all the other months of the year, you'll have just a subtotal for the closed projects and then just have all the other items, and then once a year, we'll also sort it by site so that you can see clearly the Saddleback projects and the IVC projects, et cetera. So we hope that this Board report is a little more clear for you and user-friendly for the future, and also for the public to be able to understand.
Sounds very, very good. Trustee Meldow has a comment.
I'd just like to say thank you very much. CPA made it much easier for me to understand. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Prendergast has a comment.
I also have to say, I like your definition of a larger font. That's, that's
We try.
That's interesting.
Still small. All right, seeing no other comments, oh, trustee Lang, I didn't see your, like, go ahead.
Yes, I also wanted to congratulate you on the new format, which I think is helpful in a better understanding of where we're at. I think the one caution that I would make is on the column that you show, which I think was a problem with the old report and the new report as well, where you show the balance remaining for 2012. I think one can misinterpret what those numbers actually represent. They're not, it really is just a number. It doesn't represent what may be left with respect to that project, whether there's an additional allocation that may need to be made, or what, in fact, what the status of the project is, and obviously, that's part of the reason we have the separate report that describes that information, but I just thought I'd see if you had any comments about that.
Right. The original title for that far-right-hand column was 2012 and Forward, which I didn't think was a very good, accurate description. So what we thought would be best is, if you look across the report, it shows the amount that was approved by the Board for Basic Aid Funding. Then it goes through over years, and it does describe what was actually expensed in those years, and then the far-right column now has a title that says Balance Remaining for 2012. What that's supposed to represent is what's remaining compared to what was spent and originally funded, but yes, it doesn't mean that that's what's left in the project as far as what their needs may be in the future. Sometimes there's additional phases to projects and things like that.
Yeah. The only other question that I had was, I noticed on Exhibit C, 2 of 2, for Commitments, we had a negative number in that Balance Remaining column, and I wasn't quite sure what that meant. See where I'm at? 9.951 billion, negative amount.
I'll have to ask, I'll have to research that negative amount. I believe it's because of the years that's represented, but I have to clarify that. That was the item that we didn't change from previous reports, but I'll have to double-check that.
Okay, thank you very much. We're now at 7.4, Facility Plan Status Report. Comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll go to 7.5. This is the Monthly Financial Status Report.
I did want to just sort of point out that we did revise this report as well. We wanted to make it a little more meaningful to the Board and to the audience that is reading this report. The original report, if you take a look at Exhibit A, we added a column to the right that says Percent Actual to Revised, and when I'm looking at the monthly report and I'm looking at any financial information, I'm always looking at what is our budget and what is our actual compared to the budget. That number in and of itself does help us look at year-to-date and where we are in that year, whether our revenues are coming in, in the way that we're projecting, whether expenditures are in line, and I think that's a more meaningful number as you look at those percentages. At the bottom of the report, you can see that there's a note, and what I always also look at is where were we compared now compared to last year, and so we're And so, we're providing those percentages as well, so the board can look at that as a guide, and you can sort it, is this time last year, where were we, are we in line with last year as well? I think those two items that we've added at least will help provide a little more information to the board when you're looking at the monthly financials.
Thank you. Trustee Pennergas?
Yeah, just to make sure I'm looking at that, because I deal with a similar budget in other entities I'm dealt with. Is that to say if we're 75% through the fiscal year and we're at 75% of our funding, we're good, or is this?
No, you can't really go by that.
Okay.
A little bit more than 85% of our sal- our budget is salaries. We do, so you could expect, because we run on an academic calendar, for us to be a little bit higher than any point in the given year because of our salaries. You do want to make sure that our revenues are coming in in a timely manner, that we are recognizing those, and also that it is sort of consistent how we apply our expenses, particularly the operations.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll go to 7.6, and that's the Retiree Trust Fund Report.
Just as presented, nothing new to respond to this.
Seeing no questions or comments. 7.7 is the Quarterly Financial Status Report. No change, no comments or questions. Now, we are at 8, item 8 on the agenda, which is our written reports from our constituent groups, so we'll start with Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Dan Walsh, Saddleback College Academic Senate. Congratulations to our Faculty Members of the Year. I'm also excited about the new faculty, thank you for approving that tonight. We also just concluded our elections for the Academic Senate Leadership for next year. Bob Cosgrove will be the incoming president. I will be the president-elect, so I'll be back in two years. Vice Presidents Bruce Gilman and Kim Stankovich, and Secretary Kim Darcy. Also, since this will be my last board meeting for a year, I'm actually enjoyed these meetings. I used to come to board meetings after a class that ended at 6 o'clock, and I would just sit in the back and watch what was going on. That was before I was in Academic Senate Leadership. And then I would, came last year as president-elect, the tone, the demeanor, it's a night-and-day difference between where we used to be and where we are now, and it's just, it's a much more positive working relationship, so I just wanted to congratulate the entire board for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our next report is Faculty Association.
Louis Long for the Faculty Association. This also is my last meeting, but unlike Dan, I am not planning on coming back.
What?
Beginning with the next meeting, Paula Jacobs will be taking over, and we just, we are, as of midnight tonight, we will complete our elections and our offices are running unopposed, so I think it's a fairly good prediction that Clara Cesaro Silva will be our president-elect and will succeed Paula in two years. I would also like to echo Dan's comments and would like to add to those comments, that not only do I appreciate the efforts of the board, but I also appreciate the efforts of the administration, both at the district level and at the colleges. It has been a very difficult several years, and I have functioned both as Academic Senate President and twice as Faculty Association President during this term, and the last two years have been, in comparison with the past decade, incredibly pleasant. And working with Chancellor Portner, with Vice Chancellor David Bouquet, with both college presidents, has been really quite a pleasure. A very professional group of people that we have working here now, and I appreciate it.
Great, that's good to hear. Okay, and our Irvine Valley College Academic Senate?
I'd like to echo what's been said earlier and congratulate the Professors of the Year at both IVC and at Saddleback. Faculty, of course, is wrapping up classes, getting our last lectures and our last labs completed and preparing for finals and, of course, commencements. I'm going to finish up by clearing this table over here. After three years as Academic Senate President at IVC, I didn't run for a fourth, and Kathy Schmiedler will be here next month as the new Academic Senate President. Bob Urrell will be the new Vice President. Diana Hurlbut will be our Curriculum Chair, and our Academic Affairs Chair will be Rupa Mather. The only returning cabinet member will be June McLaughlin, who is our clerk. So, it's been fun, I've enjoyed myself, and I'll be in the audience if I'm here next time.
Thank you very much. Associate Vice Chancellor Economic Development, Mr. Peoples?
Good evening, thank you. This past Saturday, I attended the ATAP IVC Southern California H-Tech Automation Event at the ATAP campus. This was an all-day event with almost 100 attendees from local automation manufacturers and some partnering high schools and colleges. ATAP now operates, IVC at ATAP now operates a Regional Haas Automation Training Center and is demonstrating IVC's and ATAP's ability to fill an expanding employment gap in this training for these high-tech, high-paying jobs. Anyway, my commendations to President Rockmore and his staff for his innovation and work in the curriculum in that area. Thanks.
Thank you. President Rockmore, IVC.
Well, I didn't realize this was happening so quickly, but I guess I would like to say my farewells to Louis and Lisa. I thought at least there would be another month or so there, but let me say how much of an honor it has been to work with both of you in your roles. I think you both have helped the institution, and in Louis's case, the district moved forward in a very positive way, and I appreciate that deeply. Regarding, I'm going to let the rest of the report stand, I feel like I took up most of my time in the beginning, but I would like to just highlight a couple of things in my report, and that is Professor Stan Breckenridge has now received a second Fulbright Scholar, and this time it's a distinguished Fulbright Scholarship. He's a musicologist, performer, composer, and has been with IVC for quite a long time now and teaches a whole array of courses, so please take a look at that, we're proud of him. And then, I don't believe, last time I had a chance to congratulate Barry Miller. He's our IVC Classified Employee of the Year, and he's a Senior Multimedia Technician in Media Services, which is part of our college IT, so I congratulate him, he's a highly-valued employee at the college. And that's it for tonight, thank you.
Thank you. President Burnett, Saddleback College?
Thank you, Madam President. I also would like to congratulate our six Professors of the Year. Second, also, thank you, Dan Walsh, for being a fantastic Academic Senate President. You always talk about people, how they grow into a role, well, I'll tell you, Dan came in right away and has served admirably to represent our faculty and our college, and just wanted to thank him. Also, would like to thank Don Minia, who's on the other side. This is, I might be his last meeting, I'm not sure, nope, second. Oh, you have one more? I am embarrassed, he has one more year. I'm sorry, I thought you were done. I thought Mike Sauter was coming. Well, I'll get you a year early here. Also, Louis, thank you also, as well as being a superb Faculty Association President, so thank you all. Also, wanted to thank the board very much for, and the chancellor for attending our Saddleback Foundation Gala, which was a very big success. I think we raised over $85,000. We had, I think, one of the largest attendances, and what's really exciting about it was, it was all done by students, by our volunteers, by our staff and faculty at the college. As you know, the food, the decorations, the tables, centerpieces, the setting everything up, the entertainment, everything was done by them, it was really superb. So, congratulations to our foundation, and once again, thank you for, I think everybody came, so it was fantastic. A couple of things, a lot of people mentioned a lot of stuff coming over the next two weeks or so. I wanted to throw some things in, hopefully if I don't duplicate here, but I might have, but there's some new things. First, we're having our Saddleback Art Gallery, is presenting over 400 works of art by our students, and there's going to be a awards reception on Tuesday, May 3rd, if anyone's interested, but I certainly welcome you to all to come out, it'll be up and exhibited for the next two weeks. May 10th is our Annual Student-Athlete Awards Ceremony, I believe trustee Padberg had mentioned that. That's where we recognize our students for athletic and academic success in our athletics. Wanted to bring this up in particular, that I'm very pleased, if you have not heard, but wanted to let the board and the public know, that our athletic division has created a new award. It's called the Dr. Richard McCollough Character Champion Award, and this is given annually to one male and one female student athlete, who also is our representative to the Orange County, Orange Empire Conference nominations for those student awards as well. So, I was very pleased to hear that our division did that for Dr. McCollough. May 3rd is a transfer celebration on campus, would love to have you come. Also, May 3rd is a, and I think our student trustee had mentioned it, is our Job and Internship Fair on our campus in the quad, which is a great event. May 5th, we have our Saddleback College Fashion Show in McKinney Theater at 5:30. May 10th is our Scholarship Ceremony, 3 o'clock in the gym. May 15th, our Nurses Pinning Ceremony. And finally, commencement, May 18th, and look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
And Vice Chancellor Bermucchi's not here, so we'll move to Chancellor of Human, Vice Chancellor of Human Resources, Dr. David Gay.
You're good. Dan Walsh has been a pleasure to work with. He's blunt, to the point, he represents faculty well, and he does so with a lot of dignity and respect, so he's been a really good person to work with academic Senate-wise. I've known Lisa a little bit better, because Lisa and I worked a lot together on accreditation. We worked on multiple committees, spent hours together. Lisa's also very blunt, very direct, very Texan. Lisa and I presented together on the transparent follow-through committee model that we developed through our accreditation study, and she's fabulous to present with as well. I have to tell you, Louis Long is one of the most unusual union presidents I've ever come across. I am used to writing almost all contract language, part of it is because I know what's in it, because I wrote it, and also the part is the details. Louis Long is one of those rare people who comes up during negotiations, he will write something, when he writes something, there's no tricky, devious words put in, you have to watch every word. Louis is a man of integrity, and frankly, it's been great to work with him. And I will miss him, he'll be back eventually somehow, but he's been a very good president, and by the way, he doesn't rubber stamp everything administration brings his way, just in case you ever worried about that. The other part is, tonight's veterans presentation, I love the content. One thing that might have slipped by was the collaboration. If you notice that both colleges worked together, that was a fabulously articulated presentation, thank you, college presidents, you both did a fabulous job, but especially their staff, they got together, it was slide, and there was no competition between the slides, it was very clear they worked together on that. That was really a very positive thing on behalf of the chancellor and the presidents and the colleges working together. Just one plug for human resources itself, we just got our iPads this week, we will be having some Guinea pigs committees this week for hiring faculty, where there'd be not one bit of paper coming across their table. We'll have the paper hidden in the side, just in case something goes sideways, but our practice hiring with the total electronic process will begin this month. Hopefully, by next board meeting, when you see some of the hires coming forward on the agenda, they'll be done 100% electronically without any paper involved, so thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chancellor Business Services?
Just that I want to thank Dan, Louis, and Lisa for their participation on all the district-wide committees and all the efforts this year. They've done a phenomenal job, and we're going to miss having them, and looking forward to work with them again in the future. That's it.
Okay, thank you. IVC Classifi- yeah, Classified Senate, go ahead.
Dennis Gordon, thank you. Well, I want to thank the board for the resolution recognizing classified employees. I really appreciate it, and I know all of our classified employees also. Thank you so much. Also, we talked about veterans today. One of the things we've done on our campus a couple of weeks ago, we organized a food drive with the help of two of our classified employees, and I'd like to recognize them both, Vincent Cooper and Robert Florinoy, who both happen to be veterans. But they went out and they got food distribution center, collected a lot of food. All of our classified employees got together and helped, but we distributed food to over 40 families, each family got about 30 pounds of food and supplies, so it was fantastic. I think we're going to continue to do this on a monthly basis, so we're trying to do our support for our veterans on our campus.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
And our CSE president, we heard from earlier?
Yes, and I was very impressed with the veterans' presentation myself, and I also have a dad who was a World War II veteran and 52 missions as a nose gunner, so I realize how difficult it is to deal with these struggles emotionally throughout the years, so I've always been an advocate for the vets, and we, as in my involvement in Classified Senate, started delivering cookies down in Camp Pendleton, and then we, once the Vets Center came, we put together, well, Tracy McConnell, who is a classified person, we helped orchestrate the whole basket thing that Terrence informed us about, and I'm telling you, when these veterans came to pick up their baskets, how happy they were to know that they were appreciated, and it was really great presentation. Another thing, CSEA has been actively involved in promoting the ballot initiative that qualified to be known as Protect Schools and Public Safety Act of 212. This was endorsed by the Governor, California Teachers Association, California Federation of Teachers, and has the potential to raise revenue through a quarter of 1% tax increase on individuals making over $250,000 a year, which equates to 25 cents on every hundred dollars spent. If the voters approve of this, it will result in a lot of revenue that would help close the budget gap. CSE would also like to bring attention to the fact that the first week in April was Labor History Week by the State of California, through legislation passed in 2002 by our Assembly Bill 1900 that encourages school districts to commemorate this with appropriate educational exercises that make students aware of the role of the labor movement in shaping California and the United States. UC Berkeley has been very active in promoting this awareness. On behalf of the association, President Alan Clark has stated that CSEA has been a leader in the struggle for educational funding for many years, and we will continue to fight. We have fought for many great things for our children and membership. We face many challenges as we continue to fight for public education, healthcare, retirement, and securing our benefits as devoted servants to the public. Chapter 586 of South Orange County Community College District continues to negotiating our contract infamous to our membership, who continuously struggle with many financial challenges, absence, COLA longevity, retiree benefits, and rising costs. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, Saddleback College Classified Senate?
And why was there confusion about my term, is we were going to institute some bylaw changes, and bylaw changes would include the one-year term as the president, but those didn't go through, so therefore, I'm going to be the president for next year. And then Mike Sauter will be the president-elect if the bylaw changes go back to one year, but most classified senators are actually making their president set two terms. Also, with the vets' presentation, congratulations, I think we do an excellent job with our veterans, but it's also all the workers at Saddleback College and Irvine Valley that helps veterans. It all, it needs that team approach, especially for the mental balance. Congratulations to all the students celebrating on their graduation, this is the time to celebrate and do it safely. Congratulations on the colleges of spending millions of dollars for our facilities, we needed. We're looking forward to the summer of the classified, because this is the time that we get time to catch up, because there are so many activities throughout the year, we really don't have that much downtime anymore, and with not that many employees again, and the hiring to replace some of the people that have been retired a long time ago, again, we are lacking that downtime, so we desperately need that downtime. And congratulations to all the looming pay raises and increases for the administration and faculty and the managers. And I wish I could have attended your last Saturday event to give you input, unfortunately, I didn't have enough time to actually schedule it, and the notice came a little bit late. So, congratulations and thank you.
Alright, thank you very much, and I do believe we are at the end of our business, so we will adjourn, unless there's an objection.